Okay. Good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Chair Noah Levy, presiding tonight. I hear a little echo, which I don't normally hear. So before we begin, as usual, I just want to quickly call your attention to page two of our agenda. That outlines the various ways that you can watch or participate in the Planning Commission meeting remotely. Keep in mind that if you are on a computer, if you have access to a computer and wish to participate in the meeting, the best way to do that is through the Zoom feed, which is listed there at the top of those ways to connect. That allows you to participate with us in real time. You can also participate via telephone, and the ways to do that are there in the agenda as well. You could also watch the livestream of the meeting on the humboldt-ledgestar.com website. But just bear in mind that if you're watching it on Ledgestar and wish to use the phone to participate, the Ledgestar feed is a little bit behind realtime. Well, with that, we will begin the meeting, and I will invite you to join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with the roll call of the commissioners present, and before we do that, I just thought I would take the opportunity to welcome the gentleman to my left, Mr. Lonex Landry, our newest commissioner representing the 4th District. Great to have you here, sir.
Thank you, Noah.
Okay, Trip, can we get a roll call vote? I mean, not a vote, just a roll call. Sorry.
Where is Peggy? I'm having some technical difficulties.
Seeing it come up on the screen.
I'm going to perform the roll call by hand.
Okay, sure.
Ivor Scobdahl.
Present.
Thomas Mulder. Noah Levy.
Present.
Lonex Landry.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Excellent, good to have you, Brian.
Oh, great. So...
And that's all, we have a quorum.
Wonderful. So we have Commissioner Mitchell here on Zoom, and he is a panelist, it looks like. Yeah, great. Okay, so we have five members, that's a quorum. And with that, we will proceed to item C on the agenda, which is Agenda Modifications. Director, I believe you said you do want to make a couple of modifications.
I do, thank you, Chair. We would ask the Chair's indulgence to consider moving items removed from consent from after new business to before new business. That would place them between old business and public hearings.
Sure, that sounds fine. That's how we've, I think, agreed to do it recently.
Correct. And then there are two items that were identified as being on public hearings that we believe could, unless somebody wants to discuss them, be moved to the consent calendar. And one of them would be item G2, which is the Karruk Housing Authority Plan Development Permit. If the Chair could survey the audience and see if there's any objection during the consent calendar to acting on that as part of consent.
Certainly.
We believe that would be appropriate.
Okay.
And then also, the same with item number G4, which is the Moser Properties Extension of a Parcel Map Subdivision. Since this is just a parcel map extension, it probably will not generate a lot of controversy, and so the same concept would be that if the Chair during consent surveyed the audience to see if there is any objection to addressing that as part of the consent calendar, we feel that would be appropriate. And then wanted to bring to your attention, when we get to it, that the William Cosby Special Permit, the applicant, due to circumstances beyond their control, is asking for a continuance of that, and that is to...
March 2nd.
March 2nd.
Okay.
And so that will require a motion and a vote to continue that to March 2nd.
So we'll deal with that when we get to new business items?
Yes.
And we'll just, at that time, seek a continuance. Okay, sounds fine. Thanks for that explanation.
And there is a supplemental for the Santos Final Parcel Map Subdivision, and this is just a couple of modified conditions relative to the Public Works Recommendation in the Phasing Plan.
Very good. Okay. All right, well, with that, then, before we get to the consent agenda, we will come to item D, Public Comments. This is for general public comments pertaining to land use issues or the jurisdiction of this commission, but not comments about items on our agenda. We will have a later chance to get to items about, comments about any items on the agenda. But at this time, I would like to see if there are any members of the audience either in person or on Zoom or phone that would like to make a public comment on an item not on our agenda. Are there any in the room? Not seeing any in the room. I don't see any hands up on Zoom or phone either. So with that, then we will move on to item E on the agenda, that is the Consent Agenda. So as the Director just explained, I'm going to go through the items on the consent calendar to see if any need to be pulled for discussion or questions, and I'll also ask about those couple of additional items that are listed here under Public Hearings. So the first item on consent is item 1, Adoption of Resolution Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings for Another Two Weeks From Tonight's Date Through February 28th. Just to be clear, this is usually something we do for a full month, but at this time, it's only going through the end of February because, under state law, that's as long as we can continue to have these meetings be held in the same virtual manner that we've been doing for the past several years. So, is there anyone wishing to ask a question about or discuss that first item? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Hello, Commissioner Mitchell?
Hello.
Glad to have you up here. Okay, the second item on consent is Review and Approval of the January 19th, 2023 Action Summary.
Could I please pull that item?
Yes, okay. I thought we might need to pull that. We will pull that from consent and discuss that a little bit later. Item 3 on consent is the Bridgeville Organic Farms LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Dinsmore area. Is there any commissioner or any member of the audience wishing to pull that item for questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. The fourth item is the Santos Final Map Subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Any commissioners or members of the audience? Yep, we are going to pull that one from consent. The fifth item is Punta Cana LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit. This item is actually just seeking a continuance until March 2nd. But is there anyone on the commission or in the audience wishing to discuss that or ask questions about that tonight? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. And then, as the Director suggested, there's a couple items here under Public Hearings that probably should have been listed under consent, so we will treat those similarly. The item listed as G2 is the Karruk Housing Authority Plan Development Permit in the Orleans area. Anyone on the commission or the audience wishing to ask questions or discuss this Okay, we'll move that to consent. And finally, the item G4, Moser Properties Extension of Parcel Map Subdivision in McKinleyville. Any commissioners or audience members wishing to discuss this item? All right, then that will move to consent as well. And so reviewing the consent calendar, then, I have that it would include item 1 and 2, sorry, item 1 from consent, pulling item 2, item 3, Bridgeville Organic, item 5, Punta Cana, continuance, and the addition of the Karruk Housing Authority Plan Development Permit and the Moser Properties Extension of Parcel Map Subdivision.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar items. Could we get a roll call vote, sir?
Ivor?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Lonex Landry?
Aye.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is approved unanimously. Let's see. So that would bring us to Agenda Section F, Old Business, but we don't have any old business listed tonight. So then, before we get to the scheduled public hearings, we will, as discussed by the Director, we will insert items pulled from consent at this point in the agenda. So that means we have two items to discuss under this section. That's the January 19th Action Summary and the Santos Final Map Subdivision. Those are the only two we pulled, correct? Okay, thanks. All right, so, moving to the first one, the January 19th, 2023 Action Summary. Commissioner Mitchell?
So I know we're all getting used to the new set of Robert's Rules of Order and different types of motion that we can make. It didn't seem like the person that put together the minutes understood that there are new ways to make motions, and in this case, this was the one where we had a motion and then we had a motion to amend. However, the minutes say that, like, a friendly amendment was made and the motioner, the original motioner, agreed to it, which doesn't reflect how it happened, nor does it have the results of the vote of the motion to amend.
Yes, I noticed that as well. That is item H2, Renewable America, that's the one. And good to just call this out because it is a new process. We haven't, we hadn't had that happen before in all the years that I can remember. But Commissioner Mitchell is correct that, it says here, "The maker of the motion and the second accepted a proposal by Commissioner Brian Mitchell," but in fact, it was, it was a motion to amend, and we did have a vote on that motion to amend. So we can, you know, bring this back next time and get that...
Absolutely. The, the language in the action summary was modified to bring it in line with the language that the Director supplied me for the resolution.
I did, I missed that there was a vote on that. I didn't recall there being a vote on the motion.
Yeah.
That wasn't in my, I must have missed that, so...
Sometimes it happens more informally, like, just a proposal was accepted while they're still kind of making or making the, remaking it, but in this case, it was actually that extra formal step.
Okay, yeah, we'll fix that.
And to be clear, the motion to amend wasn't unanimous.
Right.
Yeah, Thomas Mulder did not vote yes on that.
That's correct. There is one very small item that I also noticed that I thought I might as well bring up while we're correcting this, which is that under G, Items Pulled From Consent, number 5, Punta Cana, if you look down at the bottom of the sort of action that was taken in bold, it's missing a word, it says, or a couple words, it says, "A motion was made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner McCaver, that the Punta Cana LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit, period." I believe what we did was we continued it, and it just needs to add that word to...
I will make those corrections. I was spread thin last week, I apologize.
No worries, you, you handle a lot and you handle it very skillfully, so no criticism is implied.
Chair?
Yes.
Also, in that same vein, under G6, the motion, it's strike, it references back to Punta Cana, it should be George Alexandrov, if we could make that correction as well.
You're...
Thank you.
Nothing gets by you. Thank you, sir. Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll have that brought back next time in the corrected form. Any other discussion needed on this, folks, before we move on? Okay, all good. Then, just to be clear, if we're not going to vote to approve this, and we're going to have it brought back next time, is any vote required on this, or?
No.
No, it's not a continuance or something?
You, you can continue it, but it doesn't require a public hearing, so...
Right, and we're not, we're just not taking any action on it tonight. Okay, so we don't need to do that, I think. All right, then, the other item pulled from consent is the Santos Final Map Subdivision. Again, for consistency, I think we should go ahead and have a presentation made on that, if you're fine with that. I mean, since we don't have too full of an agenda tonight, that, in the past, we had sometimes tried to handle a question about it in a more sort of shortcut way, but I think it's better if we just are consistent, and since this one will be discussed, I'll invite the staff to make a presentation about it. Please.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. We do have a presentation ready for you. If, am I going to be controlling this, Trip, or will you?
I thought you were going to do that, but we can do it.
Okay, we'll do it on the laptop. So, my name's Steve Luzar, I'm the Projects Design Planner. This is a final map subdivision in McKinleyville, and it was previously brought before the Planning Commission as a joint project of 88 total lots that was approved in 2008 and also modified in 2011. The current project before you is three of the five phases that remain, which are, would total at 45 parcels being created. This shows the general location of the parcel that's being further subdivided. It lies east of Highway 101 in the McKinleyville area, along the north side of School Road. It's bounded by Windsor Avenue to the west, Chelsea Way, which is a street created through an earlier phase of the subdivision to the north, and you can see where McKinleyville Avenue enters on the north side as well, to the east, Oakdale Drive and Washington Avenue. It's zoned residential single-family. There's a line that you can kind of see, I don't know if I can show, yeah, but this diagonal line represents the coastal zone boundary, so a small section of the property where the detention basin is currently is located in the coastal zone. The remainder is outside of it. So it's planned and zoned for residential development with a density of 1 to 7 units per acre. The parcel in the McKinleyville area is located in a municipal stormwater area, and there will be LID measures required that were not in effect during earlier consideration of this project. Additionally, this, there is a detention basin that's been constructed already as part of, as part of earlier phases, and that is proposed to be enlarged. You can see to the left side of the red polygon how that would look, it will. And there's been an updated hydraulic study and drainage analysis prepared by the agent for the applicant, a civil engineer. So I'm going to show you some earlier phases of the map, just to kind of show how this sits and, and the history I was mentioning earlier. If we rotate the map this way, where north is essentially to the left. So you can see that the yellow line indicates the, the earlier phases 1 and 2. When this was approved by the Planning Commission in 2008 initially, there were no phasing. It was all 88 lots, all in one fell swoop. The red is the subdivision that's before you now that was not completed. The map expired before phases 3, 4, and 5 were completed. The yellow has been completed and that map was filed, that's actually what we're looking at here. And that map resulted in 43 parcels. This was the original phasing plan, I've colorized it to kind of make it a little easier to tell. So you can see phases 1 and 2 are done, phases 3, 4, and 5 remain. They could be all completed at once or in any order that the applicant chooses. And to that end, this is showing all of those phases, which is the current map. There has been some concern about the extension of McKinleyville Avenue, which is a, let me go back here, a component of the subdivision improvements, and it was unclear what, what phase it would be tied to. So the applicant has indicated they plan to do it as part of Phase 3, but to make sure that it gets done as part of the next phase, that gets, the conditions that you received in the supplemental reflect that it will be required before the next installation of a final map is done. It sounds like Commissioner Mitchell, do you, do you want to ask a question?
I did. I wanted to ask, in the original approval, are you saying that there was no language other than that they had to do it, but no, no language on when it should be done?
That's my understanding. The timing was, was not clear unless Public Works...
I'm not sure of the language.
Yeah, I, I didn't work on that project, but it, it was unclear enough that we felt it necessary to clarify it, and that's what we have done in the revised condition language.
And you said that it will be done in conjunction with Phase 3, but did I also hear you say that they could do them out of order, they could do Phase 5 and then 4?
That's correct, so to...
And do 3 in the road?
Well, that, to avoid having the, the delay of the extension of McKinleyville Avenue and the offsite improvements as well, we've made it that no, no phase, the next phase that gets done, whether it's 3, 4, or 5, will have to have those improvements completed. So, because the, the law doesn't allow, the subdivision map act does not allow us to dictate the phasing, so, so we have to plan for that, and that's why the condition's more rigid.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I want to bring to your attention something that came up late to our attention, and that's this Lot B. This is a parkland lot that is intended to meet the applicant's requirements under the Subdivision Map Act and our subdivision regulations for the creation of parkland. There's a ratio, and it's, it's consistent with that. However, the, I spoke with McKinleyville Community Services District today, and it was brought to our attention recently, that they do not want to accept responsibility for the maintenance of this, and there's some reasoning behind that. It's not essential because, because the map expired, when, the map act says if you create more than 50 lots, you have to create parkland, you can't do anything in lieu of parkland, which we often see on smaller subdivisions. But the map has expired, so the, the map before you is for 45 parcels, so we don't technically have a responsibility to create parkland, and McKinleyville Community Services District is not real jazzed on accepting the responsibility of it. And part of the reason for that is that, if you see off to the right here, that green is a parcel of land that's targeted for the creation of a future park along Washington Avenue. If we go out, I'll show you that here. So that will be a BMX track as well as, I think I have a close-up here. You can see in this conceptual design, there will be a playground and park as part of that. And that's, you can see the blue, which is Lot B from the subdivision. You know, that's close enough that it clearly will serve the, and benefit the residents of these lots. And, and given that, it, even though this isn't informally presented as a comment on the project, in speaking with Pat Caspari and others today, it was informally told to us that they would rather see the parkland fees than the actual parkland creation of that blue parcel. So going back for a second here, what will likely occur is, after the map is approved, we'll do a lot line adjustment and absorb that land into adjoining lots. One is Lot 64 from the earlier phase and Lot 17 from the current phase. So it just won't, those will be larger parcels. No new parcels will be created, just enlargement. Another alternative is Lot 17 could absorb all of it. Sounds like there's a question.
So typically, we don't, or typically, it seems like we encourage developers to develop as many units of housing as possible. So can you describe how we got comfortable with reducing the number of units?
Part of the reason, whoops, didn't mean to, if you look here, let's go back. There's a fault zone that runs through this subdivision, and we have required setbacks from it. Oh, I can't seem to pull it up, but the diagonal line that you saw on this slide here, you can see the geologic setback line. The Lot B really doesn't have a lot of usable area, so it would be a pretty small footprint, even if it were to be turned into an additional parcel. But technically, you're, you're correct, Commissioner Mitchell, there is adequate land, it's a 5,000 square foot minimum, it's roughly 11,000 square feet of land, but the majority of the land is, is very undevelopable because of the geologic constraints.
Did we look at potentially having more duplexes or triplexes in lieu of the development of more parcels?
Well, it is a residential single-family zoning, so duplex development is becoming more doable in residential zones because of state, changes at the state level, but, but as a, as a enumerated land use or, or density, it's not, it's not allowed for under its current zoning.
And what was the original proposal's number of parcels?
The map that was approved by the Planning Commission initially in 2008 was for 88 parcels, 43 in the first phase and 45 in, in the remaining three phases, and this would be consistent with that.
Okay, so we're just going from 45 to 44?
Actually, we're not.
No.
Because this was never targeted for residential development, it was supposed to be a park. So we're going to stick with 45 parcels, and two parcels will be get, getting bigger, one from this subdivision, one from the prior.
Well, I guess I'm confused because you said if there were more than 50 houses, then they had to build a park, and now we're getting 44 parcels, so...
Yeah, so...
What am I missing?
Okay, I'll try one more time here, and, and it is a little confusing. So the original subdivision was approved without any phasing, so there's 88 parcels total, there was two parks as, as part of that, this was one of them. Then it was changed in 2011 to be a phased thing, where the first two phases resulted in 43 total parcels, the last three phases result in 45, which are what we're looking at tonight. The, that map expired, and only two of the phases were completed, the 43 parcels that are currently in place and, and exist and have been some developed. The 45 they're coming forward tonight are the leftovers from the original map that were never completed. So we have a 45-lot major subdivision, which is residual from this map that was expired. major subdivision, which is residual from this ma, map that was expired. So, I'm approaching the end of my presentation. I just wanted to go through that with you because it is likely, that's not the proposal before you tonight, but it's likely that tweak will occur with lot B. I wanted to make that clear.
Can I ask, will, will that just occur administratively and not have to come back to us?
Correct.
Is there a, a number of low-income units that have to be built within this?
No.
No?
So, want to bring to your attention, one of the things you're being asked to consider tonight is granting an exception to the solar shading requirements. That would be for these two lots. It's hard to make them out, but lot 36 and lot 40 are slightly reddish. And that was something that was part of the prior proposal, and it's just being carried forward as part of this reapproval. And you did receive a supplemental, which I started to speak to earlier, which talks about the clarification largely to point to a, an updated phasing plan. Because the map expired, the lot numbers changed as a result of that. And also, Public Works issued a new memo. And we also tightened up the condition regarding the requirement that McKinleyville Avenue be extended and the offsite improvements completed prior to any new file, final maps being filed. And to be clear, the applicant's agent, I reviewed that with them. They're comfortable with that. That was their plan. So, SEQA has been already prepared and performed as part of the earlier approvals. So, in 2008, when the original project was approved, mitigating a negative declaration was prepared. In 2011, when there were some changes to the project, an addendum was prepared. And there has been very minimal changes. It's really the same map before you. Therefore, further environmental review isn't warranted. And the conditions on the property haven't changed either. So, our recommendation is that you determine that environmental review is unnecessary, that the solar shading exception request is appropriate, that this design still meets the site suitability requirements, and that it's consistent with the planned development and density for this area. And I have a, a suggested motion for you. And alternatives always exist. You could add or amend conditions of approval. You could revisit the environmental review if you felt it was warranted, or deny this, this project or deny the solar shading exception request. And with that, I think that's the end of my portion of the presentation. Public Works wanted to brief you on some of the improvements that are going to be done as part of this because I think there is some interest in that. And so, we have some slides that demonstrate that, if that seems okay.
Can you just explain the sho, the solar shading exception to me?
Yes. To the, the, that section of our subdivision regulations requires that passive solar design be possible for all lots that come out of a major subdivision. That's a requirement. And where, but we also provide a pathway where it becomes difficult to achieve that. And that's on the, on the long, on the shortest day of the year, can you get adequate solar exposure. And, and they, they struggled initially and the design hasn't changed, so they're asking for that reapproval as part of this action.
All right. Thank you.
As a follow-up, it seems to me that the updated building codes requires that homes either have solar panels or be solar-ready. Does this solar shading, will it preclude those two houses from being able to be solar-ready?
No. I would differentiate between passive solar being no energy production as a part of it. It's just you have enough solar exposure that it warms your house, you know, that way. And so, some of these will have a little bit, will struggle a little bit more in that department. But they will all be subject to the building code requirements with respect to providing solar electrical generation capacity as part of the building when they're constructed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We are going to continue with the other presentation now?
Okay.
And I'll just do the slides for you if you want.
Hi, I'm Brenda Howell with Public Works Land Use. We'll give them just a moment to pull up the presentation. It should be fairly quick. There's a number of pictures, but I'm going to let them do the speaking. Okay. This is a lot of what Mr. Lazar covered. It just shows the phasing. Note the yellow areas that are the same color as phase three. Those are the offsite improvements that are proposed with phase three. But as Mr. Lazar said, we will be requiring them before the fi, before the filing of any final map for the subdivision. So, if they go out of order and do phase five first, they will need to do the offsite improvements that are shown in yellow here. This is a close-up showing McKinleyville Avenue going through the subdivision and connecting all the way through to School Road. Thank you. This is just a, a brief summary of the improvements. There'll be completing McKinleyville Avenue from School Road to Washington Avenue. The landscaping on School Road will be completed between Windsor Avenue and Boonig Avenue. The landscaping on McKinleyville Avenue will be completed. Windsor Avenue Trail will be closing the first section of Windsor Avenue adjacent to the church there by School Road, and it will convert to a pedestrian facility once access is provided to Windsor from Duchess. You'll be able to see that on a slide later a little more clearly. And then they will be forming a landscaping maintenance district to maintain all of that landscaping. Slide please. And this is, these next few slides just show the areas proposed for landscaping. This is on School Road. Next slide, please. Again, another angle from School Road. There's several of these. Thank you. And all of the orange is just the proposed landscaping area. So, this is on the existing improvements that were done on School Road as a capital Okay. And then, this is McKinleyville Avenue offsite improvements. This is north of the subdivision adjacent to the earlier phase up to Washington Avenue. So, this project will complete improvements that look like this. They will do curb gutter sidewalk and a planter strip adjacent to their project. In fact, it's already done adjacent to the lots from the earlier subdivision. And then, they will widen adjacent. It will have to have, the two things to notice here on the interim condition, this is an interim condition pending development to the west on the parcel across the street, is that there will be a no parking area. It's near the cross-section for, for letter C. It's a little hard to see. And that is caused by a jog needed in the road there due to an existing power pole that is in the way on the west side. So, there will have to be a temporary no parking area. Next slide, please. When the parcels on the west side of the road, on the opposite side of the road develop, which are not part of this proposal, this would be the final condition of McKinleyville Avenue with bike lanes, sidewalk, and landscape strip. The develop, the parcel to the west across the street, the, the larger one, has, the owner of that parcel has approached the county about development. They are aware that this would be required and are incorporating it into their future plans. So, we have reason to believe it will go forward in a reasonable time, but there, there are no guarantees. So.
Question. Can you go back two slides, or the first flagged one? So, there's already the sidewalk along parcel A, right?
Correct.
And there will be, after they start either phase three, four, or five, sidewalk on the east side of McKinleyville Avenue as well?
That sidewalk is existing. Actually, I believe that they won't be adding any sidewalk here, but they will be widening the road itself to allow for two travel lanes.
Okay. And then, between B and C, there will be no sidewalk?
Not with this development, not until that parcel develops.
And then, there, but there will be sidewalk on the east side of, like, on C and B?
The east side, that sidewalk is existing.
Okay.
Any, any questions here? Okay. Thank you. This is those cross-sections that were called out. It kind of is just showing you what the final condition of the road will be. This is the part that is completed already and has, adjacent to the earlier phases of the subdivision. It shows the landscaping has gone in here with trees, shrubbery, the sidewalks in. Eventually, all of this sector of McKinleyville Avenue will look like this. The other side just has sidewalk without the planter strips. That is existing. Slide please. And this is showing the interim condition, offsite, the existing sidewalk on one side. And this will be widened to where there will be two full lanes of traffic. As I said, the, the no parking zone will be caused by, I believe it's not that first power pole that's showing, but one a little further down that will prevent them from having it, having the full width all the way. It'll have to, it'll have to kind of jog in around that one power pole and then go back out in the, in the temporary condition. And this is, this is also showing the temporary condition. There we go. This is just a view. Oh, this is the intersection of McKinleyville Avenue and Washington. In the final condition, this will be a three-way stop, an all-way stop. So, currently, Washington does not stop at this intersection, but with the added traffic for the through traffic from McKinleyville Avenue that will now be able to go directly to school, there will add stop signs on Washington.
Was there any, was there any consideration given to just making McKinleyville Avenue stop signless and then adding a new stop sign on Washington? The way many of the streets there that come onto Washington stop?
I don't know if that's been considered at this point, but it's definitely something that can be reviewed as it goes through engineering and is through construction design, the, the idea for having a through travel lane that doesn't stop could be looked at.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Does jogging around a pole cause a hazard? Driving hazard?
There still will be adequate width, but we will ensure that there's adequate signage to notify the traveling public. But it will be.
And they can't move the pole?
It's offsite for this project, and they have not been, as far as I know, they have not been asked to move the pole. Relocation of utilities, it can be a very expensive prospect. They acquired additional right-of-way so that they could widen, but as my understanding is, they're not being asked to move the pole.
Commissioner Landry?
Thank you, Brenda, for your presentation. And I'm curious, when we talk about landscaping, we're typically talking about, there's probably some standard. And I was, maybe for a very brief explanation from my education on, on general layman's terms, what, what those landscaping things entail.
I am not extremely familiar with the landscaping requirements, but I know that we will have them selecting from, they'll have to get approval before it goes in. There will be one tree per lot. And trees and shrubs will be selected from native, actually, I don't know if that's true, will be selected from usually a lower maintenance type of plantings that are easy to handle in the right-of-way and keep, keep the right-of-way clear for, for cars and bicycles, as well as a tree for a lot.
Thank you.
You're still in the middle of your presentation, correct?
I am.
Yeah, okay. We'll let you proceed and try to hold our questions till the end.
This is Windsor Avenue. This is the portion of this that will be closed and converted to a 10-foot wide pedestrian path. The additional asphalt will be removed. It's not needed for the trail. And landscaping is part of this as well. This, the parcel here will have access off of Duchess, which is, next slide, please, hopefully. Okay. Do you mind going back to an overview of it? Thank you. Okay. Oh, that doesn't show it. Yeah, could you?
I can.
Thank you. He'll pull it up and I can show you how the connection will be.
Okay.
No. Let's see. One of the ones with the layout of the lots, I think, would be great. My apologies. Ah, you can see it there. If, I apologize. I should have included something just showing the street layout. That one is perfect. As you can see, Duchess Road comes from behind the church parking lot there. It will connect through to McKinleyville Avenue there. And then, you would be able to go down to School Road at the roundabout from there with the Duchess Avenue, that section closed. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Does that bring you to the end of your?
That does bring me to the end of my presentation.
Okay, no, no. I appreciate you taking questions along the way. Sometimes, that's the better way to do it. But are there any other questions now for either of the presenters?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Levy. I have a couple of questions. I want to go back to both the park and then the School Road area. And just so I'm clear, the, the resolution that we're proposing to adopt tonight would include the subdivision with the park. But you're explaining that you may make a change to accept in lieu, or park fees in, in lieu of that construction. I just want to note that phase one and phase two have already been developed, and those lots have already been sold. And some of those homeowners may have anticipated a park going where it's shown in here on, on this, these next phases. So, I guess I would encourage them to be notified or somehow they would have to be informed if we're going to not include a park in this project in the future. And I understand it's going around the corner, down the street. It makes total sense. But heads up, sometimes people think they're buying a lot next door to a future park. So, I would take that into consideration before just making that change. And then, with respect to school, street, phases four and five, those are back on lot, what I call back on lots onto the street. So, they're going to have a backyard fence along there. I appreciate that we've included the maintenance agreement now, although there's no detail really shown as to what that back fence, actually, sound wall. So, it says, "sound wall, fence, slash fence, or berm." No real detail as to what that is going to be. So, I don't know if you know what that is yet. Those areas tend to, as you know, attract litter, landscape problems, graffiti. If it's a wooden fence, sometimes you get broken boards. So, will the landscape maintenance agreement include maintaining or taking care of whatever that fence area is, litter removal, those type of issues? And that's, that's my question and concern.
I'm not sure that these specific terms have been worked out as yet. It would definitely be maintenance of the landscape. I think those other items could be requested of the applicant to include.
So, who, who's in this landscape? Is it just, is it just the lots that are right along that frontage that are part of the landscape maintenance agreement? Is it the whole subdivision? Is it the community services district? Who, who owns the landscape maintenance agreement?
I believe the landscape maintenance agreement would actually include the entire subdivision. Maybe one of my fellow staff members knows the answer. Because, and the reason that I believe so is because it does include the maintenance of the existing stormwater pond as well.
I guess I would encourage that it includes the exterior maintenance of the sound wall slash fence, whatever that's going to be, along School Avenue be included in that maintenance agreement. Because left to individual lot owners, just sometimes it doesn't happen. And it becomes a sort of neighborhood eyesore.
I agree with that because I live on Central and the, some of the fences have blown down. Cars have gone through them, you know. I was lucky, a car went through mine, so my insurance paid to replace it. But those fences along that subdivision have really deteriorated.
That's all I had. Thank you. Okay. No, thank you. Well, I'd actually like to ask a question, sort of a follow-up to Commissioner Scavdall's. I was struck by the, by the term landscape maintenance district that's being formed. So, that sounds like something other than an agreement, but what, what is the landscape maintenance district? Who is, will it, you know, who, who, who will staff it? Who will perform the services? Is that known? Is that, is that encompassed in what we are approving or deciding tonight?
I do not believe that that is encompassed in what we are deciding. I believe monies are collected from each parcel, and they will select some form of management that will administer those funds and handle the, handle the maintenance as part of the agreement. And all of that will be included in the agreement, but I don't know that it's but I don't know that it's been decided at this point.
Okay, so it's not, just to be clear, it's not, it's not being, it's not creating a quasi-public entity as that district, no.
That is not my understanding, no.
Yeah, okay. Okay, or you can go ahead and just clarify.
So just for answering that question, I live in the Central Estates subdivision. That's just a little bit further down McKinleyville Avenue. And MCSD does a great job sending their crew through to not only pick up the trash in the landscape strips, but also pruning the shrubs and making it look really nice.
Okay.
Okay, so that's likely how it will be operated, something along those lines. But that's a little bit outside the scope of what we're determining tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
So when we talk about having these back-on lots and having fences face along the road, I believe that that creates, for drivers going westbound on School Avenue, since it's already downhill, sort of an incentive or lack of disincentive to, to speed because they're not facing people's homes. It doesn't feel like a residential neighborhood. Has Public Works considered any potential traffic calming measures that may need to be implemented on School Road?
I don't know of any future plans for traffic calming measures. Roundabouts such as is in at School Road and McKinleyville Avenue are often used as a traffic control measure with the, the chicanes as you curve and go in and around the roundabout. If additional measures have been considered, I am not currently aware of them. We do have, we do have policies and ways to add things like speedhums if it becomes necessary.
Okay. And finally, the first two phases, Parkland dedication fees were not collected for. Is it under our discretion to ask the developer to add enough money to the pot to represent what should have been collected had this not done, been done in sort of a piecemeal fashion?
I think an important point is that Parkland was established, and I don't think I hammered that home earlier, as part of the earlier phases. So they met their requirement through creation and I can show you where that exists if you'd like to see it, but it is in place and it was developed.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see that. I'm going to ask us to hold our further comments at this point just so we can come to public comment and just see if we have any members of the public wishing to comment or ask questions. I would normally begin by inviting the applicant to comment if they are present and wish to do so. There's certainly no requirement to, but, but if we do have the applicant wishing to comment, we ask them to go first. Do we know if they're on Zoom?
I believe their agent is.
Or their agent. Yes, Mr. Schillinger, I will recognize you to go first. You are the agent, I take it? Just a moment, we don't seem to have the audio coming through. Yeah, I heard him just very faintly over. Not really, sir. You're, you're coming out on just a laptop, not on the speakers like you should so that everybody can hear, including those watching on Zoom. So if you would just hold on one moment. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Schillinger, while we try to work this out. Right there, yeah. Yeah, the one with his hand up. Do you think we ought to take a short recess while we try to hammer this out? Yeah, I mean, we're not done with the item, but it's. I, I think if we're going to take the public comment, it has to be that others following publicly could hear it.
Chair, I would recommend that you just go ahead and call a break.
Okay. Just before we do break, Mr. Schillinger, can you just try speaking again? Okay. I think we should take, we should adjourn, or not adjourn, but take a recess and we can keep him on Zoom while we try to work this out. But let's, let's go into a brief recess. That should hopefully hack it enough for tonight.
We'll see.
Okay, are we live again? Okay, my apologies to those of you who were attending remotely or watching this. We've had a unusual technical difficulty that required that longer delay, that longer recess, but I think we've found a way to get the sound from remote participants to be heard in the room and hopefully heard on all sides. So when we left off, we had Mr. Jacob Schillinger, agent for the Santos Project, trying to, to make his comments at our request. Mr. Schillinger, are you still there?
I am.
Great, and we're, I think we're actually able to hear you okay now.
All right.
Thank you for your patience.
So the project, as mentioned by Planner Steve Azar, seeks to develop the parcel into 45 residential lots. The project will construct a vital connection for, you know, vehicles and all that for McKinleyville Avenue by extending that to the existing roundabout. The project, while it was approved previously in the past, it's going to include and meet current standards for low-impact development for stormwater, which on the tentative map, currently there's some stormwater planners on Duchess Road and Caitlin Place. And lot-specific measures will be also implemented during the improvement plan phase. Something that wasn't mentioned, or I don't think was mentioned, is that the extent, the existing detention basin will be expanded into Windsor Avenue and expanded up. And then, so basically there'll be a trail and then the detention basin along that area of Windsor Avenue between School Road and Duchess that's going to be closed. The reason being, it's just part of a, a phase part of development, Phase One and Two, and a portion of the School Road, County School Road, drainage currently runs into this basin, but the basin needed to be expanded in the future phases of the past development and it will be expanded in this development. There is a discussion of landscaping and maintenance. Typically in these type of projects, MCSD, we, the applicant enters into an agreement, what's called an open space maintenance zone agreement with MCSD. And there is fees associated that get tagged to the lot owners in order to support that, in order to maintain the landscaping. Without MCSD's help oftentimes, or even just private agreements, you could run into issues, but open space maintenance zone agreements are definitely the way to go and through MCSD to maintain any of the landscaping on the project. And then, other than that, lastly, I feel like that this project meets the prescribed density with the current zoning and I request that the commission approves the project.
Thank you. You know, I'd, I'd actually just prefer to get through, if there is any other public comment, an enclosed public comment. And then, Mr. Schillinger, if you don't mind, we might have an additional question or two for you. But while we're still open in public comment, are there any other members of the audience on Zoom who wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I will close, close public comment. However, we still may ask the agent question. So, Mr. Schillinger, if you don't mind, we, we actually do have at least one question for you.
So my question's regarding the power pole that, that it was explained to us that the road has to jog around. Was any consideration given to relocating that pole out of the way so that the road wasn't obstructed in any way? And if so, what kind of consideration was given?
That requirement, that requirement was something that Land Use developed in their conditions of approval. That was in their preliminary, the conditions of approval. That, because it's off-site, it can get, you know, it's a very expensive thing to relocate PG&E poles and I feel like it might unfairly, you know, pin that directly on the applicant or my client to do that. But Land Use and I did not have a formal discussion on that, no.
Did you look at what the cost would be to relocate it?
I did not look at that cost because the tenant map was submitted and then preliminary comments from, in the preliminary condition approval I saw before this meeting, it pretty much mentioned having a chicane go around that existing pole and that any future widening would be pinned on the developers of those adjacent lots west of that pole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant, for the applicant's agent? Okay, thank you again for your comments, Mr. Schillinger. We'll let you go. And with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion. If we have any further discussion. Commissioner Mitchell?
I would just like to thank staff and the applicant for being so diligent and making sure that regardless of which way the developer goes, that we will get this really important safety improvement for the pedestrians and drivers in McKinleyville. So I'd happily offer a motion once I hear from my fellow commissioners.
I'm, Commissioner Scavdall?
Yeah, it's a great project and well-presented by staff and the applicant. I'm going to request that the maintenance agreement include the, maintaining the back-on fencing within, from the public right-of-way side.
Sure.
If we could, thank you.
Can I just ask staff? Can you suggest specifically which, which condition, where would be the appropriate place to add that to the conditions of approval?
So just to make it really easy, we would recommend that you just add a new condition.
Okay.
To indicate that the landscape maintenance district include provisions to maintain the exterior fence along School Road.
Do we need to add any additional findings?
Sure. Under the finding relative to maintain public health, safety, and welfare, that it's important to ensure the maintenance of the exterior boundary fence. And so a condition has been added to provide the funding to maintain that fence. Thank you.
So does that mean if the fence falls over, then someone else is going to come and fix it, other than the homeowner?
Correct.
Okay, well, that seems like a useful and appropriate addition to me. Any other discussion or thoughts before we do have a motion on this?
I just want to ask one more question of you about this pole. And could you explain again to me what is going to happen there with the road? You said it was going to narrow, it's still going to be two lanes?
It's going to be a slight chicane around the pole. It'll still be two full lanes of traffic. So a typical minimum lane width is 10, 10 to 12 feet. They will maintain that width. There will just be a slight curve in the road to go to.
And is there sidewalks in that area?
Not on that side. There, that will happen with future development on the west of McKinleyville Avenue. The other side of the road does have sidewalks existing.
So I didn't know what chicane meant, but so.
If I could add to that, Commissioner, and I think it's really important that you recognize that when we're talking, we're talking about the pavement bending around the pole, not the road. So the travel lane will still be intact.
Okay.
But then there will be pavement that extends beyond where the pole is and then it'll have to go around the pole. But the travel lane won't be impeded. So we're not going to leave a utility pole sitting in the travel lane.
Well, I know that, but I was just thinking of people walking by there and if a car has to jog around something, you know, just to make sure that the public's going to be safe, kids and, you know, others that are going by that area. If someone's coming home late at night, not paying attention.
There is a sidewalk with a six-inch curb on the other side of the road.
So you're assuring us that it's safe?
Doing my best to do so.
And if it turns out that it's not, that'll be something that you'll look at later as a modification?
Any safety concerns would be addressed as quickly as possible if they, they appeared. But there will be a pedestrian path on the, on the east side of the road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we adopt the resolution in Attachment One, which says the following, find that the, and the addendum were previously adopted and considered for the project and no further environmental review is required and make all of the required findings for approval of the Final Map subdivision coastal development permit and special permit, including the exception requests related to the solar shading requirements for lots 36 and 40, including the additional finding that we find that to protect the public safety and welfare, that we need to make sure that the maintenance agreement include the backside of the fences facing the road and approve the Santos major subdivision subject to the recommended conditions, including the modified condition number 16? Number 18, excuse me, as well as include a condition 19 regarding the maintenance agreement as the fence is about the road.
Okay, and is that, is that resolution or, yeah, is that motion clear enough to the staff? Thank you.
A second, that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, then, Chip, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
I'm just going to have to be real loud.
Okay.
Ibra Scavdall?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Lonix Landry?
Aye.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
And Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. And yes, Trip, I forgot that your microphone is currently being used. Okay. Okay, okay, we don't need a recess. We'll just attempt to switch this over to the room speakers, yeah?
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Yeah, good. I guess if, if we can hear that through the speakers, we'll hear everything else, right? Okay, very good. Thanks so much, guys. Okay, and then, we just have a couple more items on the agenda. So, that brings us to section G of the agenda, public hearings, only two things of which remain. The first is the Georgie Alexandrov conditional use permit and special permit in the Whitethorn area. And I would invite staff to make a presentation on this project.
So, good evening, commissioners. My name is Devin Sutphenably, planner, presenting for you this. Speak a little louder. Okay, is this, is this better?
We can hear you good.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, members of the viewing and listening public. My name is Devin Sutphenably. I'm the planner that'll be presenting for the department this evening. For your consideration this evening is the Georgie Alexandrov conditional use permit and special permit project. So the proposed project is for 22,000 total square feet of cultivation. That includes mixed light and ancillary nursery space conducted in six greenhouses. So currently, there's a 2,800-square-foot ancillary nursery, which exceeds the 10% of the cultivation area. And so, based on our cultivation area verification, we're recommending a condition of approval reducing the overall amount of cannabis, including cultivation and propagation onsite at any given time to a maximum of 22,000 square feet. So that's covered in conditions of approval six and seven. So drying and curing is going to occur onsite in a 1,200-square-foot facility, with all other processing like trimming and packaging occurring off-site at a licensed facility. So here we've got kind of an overview of the access to the parcel. Access to the site is via a private driveway or a private, sorry, is a, via driveway off of Goodman Ranch Road, which is a privately maintained road. Edersburg Honeydew and Bryslund Thorne Road, Redwood Drive off of Highway 101 all provide the access. And so Bryslund Thorne and Edersburg Honeydew are both county-maintained roads that are approved for use, or commercial cannabis use by the Department of Public Works. So we've got a road evaluation report that was completed by the project's previous applicant, which indicates the roadway Goodman Ranch Road is adequate for the proposed use. So we've also got a condition of approval, I wanted to mention, that requires the applicant to join a road maintenance association, or at least pay fair share of the, the costs for the maintenance of the, of the non-county maintained road. So that's condition of approval number 14. So here we've got a site overview. Up at the northern part, you'll see four greenhouses. And down at the southern part, near a point of diversion, you'll see a couple of other greenhouses. So at the southern side is where a point of diversion is for the irrigation water. We'll cover that in here in just a second. So water demand for the project is expected to be approximately 160,000 gallons per year. And that roughly equates to about seven gallons per square foot. So the irrigation source is a point of diversion from a, from a spring. So existing water storage right now is about 62,000 gallons. It's in hard-sided tanks and water bladders. We've conditioned the project to have the applicant remove the water bladders and replace with an equal amount of storage with hard-sided tanks. That's condition of approval number 11. So in order to meet the annual demands of the project, the irrigation demands, we're requiring that the applicant install a minimum of 102,000 gallons of additional water storage and to install rainwater catchment infrastructure that makes use of a minimum of about 2,050 square feet of surface area. So just as a note, like putting gutters on one of the greenhouses or the residence, for example, will actually help meet that demand. So in terms of biological resources, the nearest northern spotted owl sighting is just under a mile away. The nearest northern spotted owl activity center is just under a mile and a half away. We obviously refer the project to California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And we've got some comments and some communications back from them. Mainly, these were requests for confirmation of project details. And they requested a protocol-level survey for northern spotted owl or for us to assume the presence of northern spotted owl and condition the project accordingly. So that's the, the path that we chose to take, is to condition the project accordingly. And so we've included a noise and light attenuation plan, waste management plans, and the prohibition of anticoagulant rodenticides. So there was a previous timber conversion on the, on the site, just under an acre and a half. And we've got a timber conversion evaluation as part of the application materials. So as part of that initial timber conversion evaluation, we've conditioned the project to basically improve road drainage features and bring the project into compliance with the California Practice Act and the California Practice Rules. And so we've also conditioned the project to address potential post-2016, post-January 1st, 2016 timber removal. So there's another condition that basically, another registered professional forester will need to reassess the site and make sure that they're going to provide any mitigation measures that are necessary. So if there were any post-2016 tree removal, replanting at a three-to-one ratio will be required. So our recommendation is that the commission considers the addendum to the MND, makes all the required findings for the conditional use permit and the special permits based on the evidence in the staff report. Suggests that we adopt the resolution approving the CUP and the special permit for Georgie Alexandrov subject to this conditions of approval. Concludes my presentation. I'll be available for any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Okay, well, before we see about public comment, are there questions from the commission for staff about the presentation? About the project?
Given the proximity to NSO habitat and activity centers, and considering they plan on using diesel generators until the beginning of 2027, did you give any consideration to requiring the generators to be enclosed to further mitigate noise or prevent impacts to animal life?
So issue my response through the chair, of course. There is a condition of approval that we've placed on there, and that was kind of briefly mentioned in the presentation about the noise and light attenuation plan. So essentially, the project is conditioned to phase out the generators, of course. But in terms of protecting wildlife and sensitive receptors, in the meantime, they actually can't operate generators or lights until they have demonstrated to us that the, the generators are enclosed and meet the noise thresholds. And same thing with, with lights. So, you know, this permit would be for mixed light cultivation. And obviously, they would, you know, ancillary nursery space demands light as well. So again, neither generator use before enclosure and verification by staff. So we've got, basically, that's condition of approval number 24. And then 25, number 24 directly addresses generator noise and limits its use until it can be demonstrated to meet the noise threshold, so therefore protecting the sensitive receptors. And a very similar condition, number 25, pertains directly to, to light. And so again, staff verification is required before they are allowed to operate either generators or lights, artificial lighting.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff at this time?
I think I'm curious to, new to the situation here, and perhaps you know some of these kind of general rules. But in regards to how big their operation is going to be, are they secure in their water storage and access issues?
So I appreciate the question. Again, we'll issue the response through the chair. So we discussed a little bit briefly about rainwater catchment and, and kind of transitioning to that. So, you know, the application is for 22,000 square feet. That's what we were able to verify with our cultivation area verification. Until that additional 100,000, it's really 102,200 gallons is, is what they're required to add to collect rainwater catchment, and then about 2,050 square feet of, of surface area to gutter, you know, either greenhouses or, or the residence, for example. And so basically, until they're able to install that extra 102,000 gallons of rainwater catchment and the guttering system to collect it, they're actually limited to about 10, well, exactly 10,424 square feet of cultivation. So that would be based on the point of diversion that they do have a, a water right for. So until they're able to develop that, that rainwater catchment and collect the water, obviously. At this point, if they were able to put it in tomorrow, for example, we would still need to collect that amount of water to be able to go up to the 22,000 square feet in total. And realistically, it's going to be more like, what is it, 19,200 or 19,500, with the additional being their ancillary nursery space. This parcel is zoned in such a way that we can't add any additional nursery space to it. The pre-existing amount that we've verified was only 22,000 periods. So that is why both ancillary nursery and cultivation are included in that cultivation amount.
Any other questions at this time before we do public comment? Okay, thank you. While we may come back with other questions, but at this time, let's open public comment. And I would invite the applicant or the applicant's agent to speak first if they wish to make a presentation about this item, or, you know, have any comments to add to the staff's presentation. Do we have anyone in the, on Zoom wishing to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, then we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission for further discussion. Commissioner Scavdel?
I'm ready to make a motion if, if chair's willing to entertain.
I see no reason not to. If nobody has any further questions or discussion points, then, yeah.
Move we adopt resolution by the planning commission of the County of Humboldt, certifying compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and conditionally approving the George Alexandrov conditional use permit and special permit request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner O'Neil. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, then, could we get a roll call vote? Trip, please?
Ibra Scavdel?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Lonix Landry?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the clear presentation. That just brings us to one more item under public hearings, which is just the matter of continuing the William Crosby special permit at the applicant's request.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay.
For the, for clarification on the motion, that is to.
May 2nd.
Yes.
March 2nd.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the William Crosby special permit to March 2nd and a second. I actually think we should just, we should just open public comments on this continuance. And I do see a hand up. I'm not certain if that's pertaining to this item. But I'd like to invite public comment on this item, the William Crosby special permit continuance to the next meeting. I do see a hand up. Eugene Denson, would you care to comment?
I'm actually, I would just, I'm sorry, I know this isn't pertaining to the, what you're talking about right now. I just wanted to double-check and see if Bridgeville Organic Farms was just approved as is with the staff recommendations.
Yes, sure. Bridgeville Organic Farms was on the consent calendar, and we approved that with staff recommendations with no modification as part of the consent calendar.
Awesome, great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that if I shut off the computer, I wouldn't be missing the representation or presentation from Cliff.
Nope, there was no presentation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sure thing. Okay. Any other public comment on the continuance of the William Crosby special permit? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We do have a motion to continue it to March 2nd. Can we get a vote on that motion?
Ibra Scavdel?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Lonix Landry?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. The William Cosby special permit is continued to March 2nd. And that brings us to the end of all the public hearings. We just have the last item of a report, the item, section I of the agenda is the report from Planner. We do have a presentation from county council under that section tonight, so.
Hello, good evening. If you could, Trip, just pull up the AB 2449 short summary so that they can kind of read along. I guess I'll get started in the meantime. So basically, there was a new assembly bill passed. And this modifies the Brown Act in how we can conduct our hearings here. Previously, we've been working under AB 361, and AB 361 allows for remote conferencing in a state of emergency. AB 361 is not getting modified, but what is happening is the governor is rescinding the state of emergency due to COVID at the end of this month. So starting March 1st, we're going to have to start working under these rules of AB 2449. So AB 2449, amended government code, section 54953. And basically, the main changes can be seen in subsection F, which basically discusses certain teleconferencing rules and times in which commissioners can participate remotely. What's important to note about this is that we will still be conducting hybrid meetings. So staff can still participate remotely and the public can participate remotely. It's really just rules on the, the commissioners themselves. So there's going to be two circumstances in which commissioners are going to be able to participate remotely. The first one is going to be just cause. So just cause is defined by the act itself. I think you can see those four, A, B, C, and D provisions. They discuss contagious illness, childcare, travel on official business, some other physical or disability, mental disability. When you seek a just cause, all of these you have to ask for in advance. If you, you can't for some reason and it's, it's close to the meeting, then it just has to be heard at the meeting. Just cause does not need to be voted on by commissioners, and that's important to note. And you can use only two of those in a year. The second one, the second circumstance is emergency circumstances, which is more narrowly defined as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents a member from attending. Unlike this one, it, you will need to take it to the legislative body. So the commissioners will need to vote to, to excuse you essentially, which will require a description that doesn't exceed 20 words and, and other situations that arise with that. There is a number that is combined, which is that a member cannot participate remotely for more or combined 20% of regular meetings. So assuming we operate on the same schedule, that would be 24 meetings a year, which means you could not miss more than four meetings. But we do have cancellations and things of that nature. So you could go down to about 20 meetings per year and still be allowed to miss, or. 20 meetings per year and still be allowed to miss or participate remotely on four, using either the just cause for two, and then emergency circumstance would be two as well. Some other situations is if you are participating remotely, you do not have to state exactly where your location is. This is a big change, whereas previously, you would have to post the actual physical address. And the legislators basically decided that because people may be in the doctors, hospitals, or at their private residences or family residences, that maybe posting private addresses wouldn't be the best idea. That provision itself is only going to last until January 1st, 2026, so plenty of time, but we'll see what happens in the meantime with that. If you're participating remotely, you are going to have to have both audio and visual, so know participating remotely if you don't have a camera anymore. And basically, you're going to have to have a quorum in person, so at least four members of the commission have to be physical in person if someone is going to participate remotely. And roll calling vote is mandatory if there is a remote member. I believe there's a couple of other things. And I just want to emphasize again, I mean, kind of like today, if there's streaming disruptions or someone can't make a public comment, there can be no action taken on an item until that is resolved. And I believe, other than that, I will just take any questions if you guys have any.
Commissioner Mitchell.
So it seems slightly contradictory to say that the commission has to vote on the emergency, but you're not supposed to provide any medical information. And say, for example, you were hospitalized, being on the video would potentially expose the nature of your medical situation. So is there any way to meet both of those needs?
I don't see any flexibility in the actual statute itself, and it's a state statute, so we as a local authority don't have much ability to change that. In those circumstances, you would basically just not attend if there was something that you did not want to disclose. They're very careful to limit your excuse on the emergency circumstance to 20 words. We're not suggesting that you state, in fact, the legislation is clear, please don't state medical information. That would be too divulgent. And I think most commissioners and people will understand if you give very, very basic generics.
Other questions? Commissioner Landry.
Quick clarification. So when you say for the emergency circumstances, a vote to excuse, that means excuse the in-person presence for the acceptance of video or virtual?
So yeah, the legislative body would take action on your emergency circumstance through your 20, 20-word excuse, and they would allow you to participate remotely. If for some reason they did not excuse it, or you had exceeded, they would just say you could not participate, which wouldn't, it would just mean you couldn't sit for that meeting.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yes. Commissioner O'Neill.
So prior to the meeting, just so I get this right, prior to the meeting that you know you're going to have an emergency, or you would email who, 20 words or less, what your situation is?
I would say Trip, that the Planning Commission, not us.
And then when we get to the meeting, the rest of us, that would be first on the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'd like to understand a little bit better as well. It sounds like if, if this was known in advance, like the meeting before, if it was known that far in advance, we could hold it, we could hold a discussion tonight of one commissioner's need to be attending remotely at the next meeting and have a vote on it, correct? But.
It's not on the agenda.
It would have, so it actually would have to be enough in advance of the previous meeting to be agendized?
Um.
At the previous meeting, I mean?
It doesn't have to be agendized. It has to be at the, it says the earliest circumstance with hopes that it is agendized. So if you know 72 hours in advance, please let us agendize it, because this, when you provide an excuse, it will be taking public comment on that as well.
Got it.
And so in order to give public the ability to read your excuse and then make a thoughtful public comment, we would want to agendize that, of course, because it's only 20 words. We could also, you know, televise it, screen it out, give public opportunity to read it and make comment if the circumstance arose less than 72 hours before the meeting.
So could you just put a placeholder on the agenda first to do that? And then if there isn't any, then you just move on? Wouldn't that be best?
I don't see why not.
But just to be clear, because these rules are very particular, that, that discussion, the 20-word description and the vote on the matter only applies if the commissioner is seeking this under emergency circumstances. Whereas the first category, where you could have up to two remote participations would be under just cause, and that, if I understand correctly, does not require a vote.
That's a correct understanding.
So let me just give you a real-life example in real time here, because actually, although I haven't had a chance to communicate this to the Director, I am going to not be present for the next meeting, March 2nd. I did communicate in advance of this meeting with the Vice Chair. Commissioner Mitchell will be here in person at the next meeting and able to serve as Chair. However, if I could participate remotely, I would like to. But my reason for being, for not being here is that I will be at a work-related conference out of state. And while that conference certainly will be, I hope, educating me on matters pertaining to my service to this commission, I am not clearly seeing that that reason fits within the parameters of what is outlined for a just cause excusal, right?
I am not familiar with your line of work specifically, so please excuse me, but travel while on official business of the legislative body or another state or local agency is permitted. So presumably, if you worked for another state or local agency in its official business, then it could perhaps be excused.
Just to be purely candid, I don't work for a state agency or local agency. It is at an environmental law conference pertaining to land use issues, but it's, yeah. So I mean, I just thought I would disclose that, A, so that you all do know that I won't be able to chair the next meeting, but given these rules, it doesn't seem like I can then seek a just cause excuse, or a just cause justification for participating remotely. Is that, is that your understanding?
That is my understanding.
Okay. That's unfortunate, that it's not just a little bit more inclusive, but I just thought I would put that out there. Okay. Commissioner Scavdel.
Yeah, so this is clearly tightening up our ability to attend remotely. Are there any other requirements of the planning commissioners to attend a certain number of meetings a year, or to not have more than a certain number of absences in a row, or things like that, that we should be aware of?
I think those are actually promulgated by us, the local authority, and I believe it's no more than four in a row that you're allowed to miss.
Okay, thank you.
That's my recollection, but good question.
No more than four in a row, not a four total.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We do encourage, you know, maximum attendance possible, but people have, all of us have things that come up at different times in the year, so. And I really appreciate you clarifying at the beginning, and I just want to underscore that none of this will change in any way the ability of the public to participate remotely as they have become accustomed to doing over the past three years. That will all be just as it has been, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
What is included in local governments in the definition of state travel for state or local? What, who's local?
We would have to look into that further. I'm not sure. I would say if someone's working a job maybe with the city, or if they're working with the sewer district, or.
How about a tribal government?
I could possibly see that, yes.
Okay. Their tribes are not usually local. They usually state them separately. Usually, local means city or county.
I'd have to look into the definition further. If something arose, I would definitely have you seek us out. I would think we'd be able to work with that somehow.
Any other questions about this? Well, thank you so much for that, for that presentation and explanation.
Thank you.
Director, any other items that you wished to mention under report from Planner?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a brief update on a couple of board actions that happened since we met last. One of those was an appeal of Cisco Farms. You'll recall Cisco Farms was a five-acre cultivation site in Petolia. Planning Commission did approve that unanimously, and the board upheld the Planning Commission decision unanimously. So that was, I think, a good thing. The board absolutely saw it the same way the Planning Commission did.
No additional modifications or.
No.
Conditions? Okay.
What's that? Oh, that's, that's. Thank you, Cliff. There were some concessions made by the applicant to have an employee or the applicant himself volunteer to help with some of the local volunteer agencies and to participate in the community. So, yes.
Okay.
There were some additional things that came out of that.
Thanks.
And then I also just wanted to bring to your attention that the board also approved the allocation of the grant money that came to the county from the Department of Cannabis Control. Were eligible and due to get a total of $18 million for that. We've been allocated the first phase of that, which was about $12 million. Most of that's going to be used for water storage for cultivators. Some of it will be used to install alternative sources of power on the site. And so the board did allocate that. So we hopefully will see that starting to make a difference for some of the cultivators to get their improvements done. That's all I've got. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
You had previously told me that it was no longer the time of year to be going out looking for the night sky violations. When do you expect your team to begin those?
Yeah, that is coming up again. In fact, it's interesting that you mentioned that. I was just thinking about that today. Normally, March is about the time that we start to see lights again.
Okay. I'd reiterate my interest in going on a ride-along with one of the teams, if that's not disruptive.
Talk to risk management about that. I have not gotten a good, clear answer.
Risk management. Okay.
I just lost all my video. I'm not here. The other two just came back. Okay. You know.
Well, we're almost done. Any other questions for the Director on these subjects?
I was just curious, what's the other $6 million going to go for?
That will also go for water storage and alternative power. We're also using some of that money, and this will be on the board's agenda for the first phase of this next Tuesday, is that we're beginning to study some watersheds, the impact of wells on watersheds. So we're going to put some test wells in and monitor those for a period of time, and hopefully, coming out of that, we'll be able to identify some paradigms where there is our high potential for there to be an impact and lower potential for an impact, and then also to really expand the nature of the study to get a better understanding of the relationship between surface water and groundwater and offers in Humboldt County that has an extremely diversified geology.
Will you be doing that on private property, or?
Yes. In fact, we're going to be working with applicants that have well permits and then putting test wells in around normal permitted wells to really monitor them.
So when you said there was $18 million, and $12 million is going for water storage and renewable power, the $6 million is also going for?
It, yeah, it's split up. So we, the first $12 million came in, I think approximately $9 million of that goes to water storage. 2.5 million of that goes towards alternative energy, and about $500,000 and change will go to the third part, which is the well-water study. And then the $6 million will be split similarly. The DCC decided that what they wanted to do is make sure that people were actually using the money, allocating the money before they gave the whole grant.
And how will you decide what users get the water storage and renewable power?
That's a great question. So for water storage, there were two primary factors. One came directly from DCC, and that was is that the purpose of the grant funds are to move people from a provisional license to an annual license, meaning a permanent license. And so if they were a provisional license holder, they were basically given a point for that. The second thing is we wanted to have the water storage and water conservation be in the most sensitive areas. And so we have the 12 watersheds that were identified as part of the resolution that was adopted with the CCLUO that were either protected or preserved watersheds. And so if you were in one of those watersheds, you got a point. So the people with basically two points were the, rated the highest, and then it was really a matter of how much water were they going to store? Or were you just going to use the basically maximum of $60,000 to purchase some kind of water storage? Or were you putting additional money into it to build upon, to do something larger? And so then they were ranked based upon what they were attempting to do.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is, those criteria are being applied to landowners or applicants who've already applied for these funds under our existing grant program?
Yeah. And these are also folks, in order to even get on that ranking list, they are obviously interim permit holders largely, or they recently received their actual permit from the county but have not yet made it across the provisional, from provisional license to an annual license at the state level.
I see.
So, yeah. And they're current on all their taxes, all their fees, all their processing money for their permits. So these are folks that are in the process and operating well.
So what would be the maximum amount that someone could receive?
The maximum amount would be $90,000, $30,000 for renewable energy, $60,000 for water.
Okay, thank you, Director Ford and Ms. Andrews. Any other questions before we close that out? Oh, yes.
I'm not sure, I'm going to shift topics.
Okay. Well, then, let's just bring us to the last item on the agenda, which is Planning Commission discussion items. And this is the place where a commissioner can bring up any other item for discussion that pertains to our work.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate that we reorganized the agenda tonight to take items that were removed from consent right after we adopted the consent. I think that's more fair to the applicants that otherwise had to wait to the end of the meeting and were at risk that we ran out of time, and sometimes they got continued over to the next meeting.
Yes.
So I think that's a good move. I was also going to offer for your consideration, when we pull something from consent, some ti- we pull something from consent, sometimes the, the package of information that comes to us is very thorough. And sometimes, as you noted earlier, maybe I'm just i-dotting or t-crossing, or might have a simple question about something that I'm pulling from consent. Could we have the opportunity to perhaps waive the staff report, or at least ask our question in advance of the staff report, so the staff could answer that? And perhaps we don't need to go all the way through the staff report. Last month, for example, you might remember the project that I just was commenting on the size of the water, firewater storage.
Yeah.
And I couldn't ask my question until the staff went all the way through the report. And then, regrettably, we didn't get to everything on the agenda.
Yeah.
So if we could, if it's just a commissioner question, perhaps we could waive the staff report. If it's a public question, maybe not.
Sure. That's actually not so different from how we have done it in the past. And I, and I think, I think especially when, when there are, where it does get a little bit more tricky is when we, we have public comments that are asking those questions. And I think those often are, are better to hold until after a staff report. But, but I think if there's a commissioner who, who wishes, you know, as, I remember that incident you're referring to, and in that case, you, you know, a commissioner could ask a very simple question in advance of the staff report and perhaps in lieu of one. I'll, I'll talk with, a little bit more with the Director in between, you know, going into the next meeting. But I take your point, that perhaps, given that we do sometimes run out of time, having a full staff report on every pulled item is not necessary.
Thank you for your consideration.
Of course.
I think we've done that even at the, the audience has said, I just have a quick question. You don't have to do a whole report. And we've said, fine, just ask your question.
Okay. I mean, if, does that seem like the better way for us to do it? Because we have done it that way in the past.
You would just have to ask us.
Yeah. Basically, then, how about this? We can, we can decide based on what, whatever the, the reason for pulling it from consent is, whether the commission would like to go ahead and have a staff report or not, rather than presume that we must. Does that sound good?
You'd have to ask that question.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with doing it that way. We will still have to, you know, have public comment on anything that, that is pulled from consent, but that doesn't mean a full staff report. Further thoughts, Director?
I think it's good to give yourself some flexibility.
Yeah.
Not, not everything has to be really complicated, but it's good to be consistent. And maybe one of the things we can talk about is in those situations, how to make sure we're consistent. So for those who feel better about making sure that we're being fair and equitable at all times, that we retain that sense of process and decorum.
Agreed. That sounds good. Okay. Any other commissioner discussion items?
I just had a question a few meetings back. There was a list of classes that we were required to take, but I don't, I never did get any additional information on, you know, list of the classes and the deadline to take them and who to contact. And maybe, I don't want to be deficient, I, you know, so if there is no urgency, that's fine, but if there is, could you let me know?
Thank you for bringing that up again. We will make sure we get that out. It's primarily, I think, an ethics class and maybe one other that you're, that we're all frankly required to take.
The ethics class, I think I took, that was the state requirement, but I thought the county had some, you know, like, classes, but maybe I'm wrong.
One of them is ethics. That's the one I'm probably is...
I think I took that one.
Okay.
Every, you have to take it every two years or something?
Right, but just to be clear, Commissioner O'Neil, I think you're referring to stuff that is associated with this, with this policy, right? The Humboldt County Planning Commission Rules Code of Conduct and Ethics and other things that might be required under that?
Or county requirements, not the state requirements.
Yeah.
Whereas the ethics, I believe, was state.
Is a state requirement. Yeah, I believe you're right.
I think it's also local. So, but this, if you took it through the state, it probably qualifies. It's probably the same class.
I took it online.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, great, great question now. Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, well, with that, then we will adjourn tonight's meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission, with the next meeting to be scheduled as normal on Thursday, March 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM.